Hello and welcome to study session number eighteen of daily memory lab. I hope you had a very good Diwali, so we are happy to resume after one day's break. Now if you see what we are going to today, we are going to read round number four of. Supply under GST page number eleven to sixteen, that will be our first thing. And since we did not study yesterday, so we have a couple of backlogs here. So nothing to worry much, four to five pages of uh supply under GST chapter again fifty seven to sixty one. And then we will read seven pages of charge of GST whatever we read a day before yesterday that is. Due for round two, so that we will do today and then today is due sixty two to sixty five. So we will go in this order, first we will read page number eleven to sixteen, then we will read fifty seven to sixty one. Then we will read sixty two to sixty five, so that way whatever that is due under supply under GST will be completed. Once we complete that, we will complete this whatever that was uh due yesterday and then. Depending on the time, we will proceed with today's fresh pages quota which is lay which is let's say. Maybe eight to page number fourteen, something like that, six to seven pages, depending on the time availability we will do. So on that note, let us set up the pre-study session uh intention. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not be getting big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection, my goal is to make a tiny progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. On that note, let us proceed to the first target. The first segment which is revision of page number eleven to sixteen. So we started with the term consideration, sorry, we started with the term supply. And section seven says that supply should have three elements, it should be a supply of goods or services. It should be made for a consideration and then it should be made in the course or furtherance of business. Okay, now let us read from here. A four set parameters describe the concept of supply, however. There are a few exceptions to second and third parameters, the requirement of supply being made for consideration. And in the course or furtherance of business in the GST law. Few exceptions have been carved carved out where a transaction is deemed to be a supply even without consideration. Similarly, the condition of supply be made in the course or furtherance of business has been relaxed. In case of import of services, import of services. For a consideration whether or not in the course or furtherance of business is treated as supply, okay. Further, there are also cases where a transaction is kept out of scope of supply despite the existence of. Above parameters, that is, there is a list of activities which are treated neither as a supply of goods nor as a supply of services. In other words, they are treated outside the scope of GST. GST law has clarif- classified certain activities or transactions either as supply of goods or as supply of services. Government is also empowered to notify transactions that are to be treated as a supply of goods, not as supply of services. Or as supply of services and not as a supply of goods. In the subsequent paras, the above aspects of supply have been extensively discussed. The discussion has been broadly categorized into following, supply includes and what supply excludes, supply includes. Supply of goods or or services for consideration in the course or furtherance of business. Activities or transaction between a person other than an individual on its members to or constituents for cash. Deferred payment or other valuable consideration, importation of services for consideration whether or. Not in the course or furtherance of business, supply without consideration, okay. Supply should be of goods and services or both, supply includes specified forms of supply. And should be for consideration and should be in the course or furtherance of business. Supply excludes non-supplies under GST, seven subsection two clause and then schedule three. Activities to be treated as supply of goods or as supply of services, this is clarification area, seven subsection one A and schedule two. Supply of goods or services for consideration in the course or furtherance of business. The definition of supply begins with the term supply includes thus making it clear that. GST act intends to give an extensive meaning to the term supply. Supply includes all forms of supply of goods or services or both. Supply of anything other than goods or services like money securities does not attract GST. The terms goods and services as defined under the act have been analyzed by way of a diagram on the next page. Anything supplied other than goods or services is outside the scope of supply. Goods means every kind of mobile property and it includes actionable claim, growing crops. Grass and things that are attached to or forming part of the land which are agreed to be severed before. Supply or under a contract of supply. Services means anything other than goods, it excludes money and securities, it includes activities relating to use of money. Or conversion of money by cash or by any other mode from one form of or currency or denomination. To another for which a separate consideration is charged, okay. Supply includes specified forms of supply should be for consideration and should be in the course or furtherance of business. The first part of section seven clause A of subsection one includes all forms of supply of goods or services. Or both such as sale, transfer, barter, exchange, license, rental, lease. Or disposal made or agreed to be made for consideration in the course or furtherance of business, okay. It is important to note that all that supply includes all forms of supply within its purview. Though eight illustrative forms of supply have been enlisted in the definition. Further, supply as contemplated in the first part has two prerequisites. The supply should be for a consideration and the supply should be in the course or furtherance of business. We shall first discuss the various forms of supply as illustrated in section seven subsection one clause A in detail. Forms of supply. Various forms of supply contemplated in section seven subsection one subsection, I mean clause A or. Sale, transfer, barter, exchange, license, rental, lease or disposal. These forms of supply are only illustrative and not exhaustive. However, none of these terms have been defined under the act. In order to understand their meaning, we have taken recourse to their dictionary meaning or otherwise and have explained them as follows. Sale and transfer, the dictionary meaning of the term sale is the act of selling specifically. The transfer of ownership of and title to property from one person to another for a price. As per the sale of goods act nineteen thirty, a contract of sale of goods is a contract. Whereby the seller transfers or agrees to transfer the property in goods to the buyer for a price. Further, the term transfer has been defined in the Black's Law Dictionary as to convey or remove from one place. Person etcetera to another pass or hand to another. Pass or hand over from one to another specifically to make over the possession or control of. A shopkeeper sells a pen for rupees hundred to the buyer, after the sale the pen belongs to the buyer. And shopkeeper does not have the right on any pen, I mean have any right on the pin, this is a transaction of sale. A company transfers goods from its factory to the depot for sale purposes. This is transfer of goods where the sale has not yet taken place, barter and exchange. Dictionary meaning of the term barter is to exchange goods or services for other goods or services instead of using money. Black's Law Dictionary exchange, I mean defines the term exchange as an act of giving or taking one thing for another. While barter deals with a transaction which only includes an exchange of goods or services. Exchange may cover a situation where the goods are paid for partly in goods and partly in money. When there is a barter of goods or services, same activity constitutes supply as well as consideration. When a new car worth rupees five lakhs is purchased in exchange of an old car along with the monetary consideration of. Four lakhs paid for the said purchase, a doctor got his hair cut from a barber and. Provides him medical consultancy in return, in this transaction, the doctor provided the medical consultancy services. To the barber for which consideration was in the form of haircutting services provided by the barber. Similarly, the barber provided haircutting services. To the doctor which was in the form of medical consultancy services provided by the doctor which is a barter transaction. So on that note, we have completed the first segment which is this. We have done round four revision of page number eleven to sixteen, okay, now let us go to this segment which is. Page number fifty seven to sixty one, let us begin from page number fifty seven. Non-supplies under GST, activities or transactions specified under schedule three. Schedule seven subsection two clause A provides activities or transactions specified in schedule three. Shall be treated neither as a supply of goods nor as a supply of services. Schedule three specifies transactions or activities which shall be treated neither treat. Which shall be neither treated as supply of goods nor as supply of services. Thus, the activities or transactions specified under this schedule can be termed as non-supplies under the GST regime. In a way, it is a negative list for the purposes of this uh transaction taxation in GST. Okay, so the first thing is. Uh section seven subsection two clause A, it talks about schedule three shall be treated as. Treated as neither a supply of goods nor a supply of services, again they are repeating the sentence. Schedule three specifies transactions or activities which shall be neither treated as supply of goods or okay. It is important to note that apart from the activities specified in schedule three. Some activities have been notified by the government wide different notifications which are also to be considered as non-supplies. Further, some circulars have been issued clarifying that certain transactions are to be considered as non-supplies. Hence, our discussion under this heading will revolve around the three things. Under schedule three, what are all the things that are non-supply and then why notification, what are all non-supplies? And then by way of circular, what are all non-supplies, okay. The first one is, let us talk about the items in schedule three. Activities or transactions which shall be neither treated as supply. Nor as supply of services, neither as supply of goods nor as supply of services. Services by an employer to the, I mean employee to the employer in the course of or in relation to his employment. Services provided by a casual worker to employer who gives him wages on daily basis to the worker. Or services provided by the worker in the course of employment. Casual workers employed by a construction contractor for execution of a building contract for him. Are services in the course of employment. Similarly, casual workers employed by a security services agency for provision of security services to a client. Or also services in the course of employment. Only services that are provided by the employee to the employer in the course of employment are outside the realm of supply. However, services provided outside the ambit of employment for a consideration would qualify as supply. Services provided on contract basis by a person to another. That is principal to principal basis or not services provided in the course of employment. Any amount paid by employer to employee for not joining a competing business is paid for providing the service. Of forbearance to act and cannot be considered as. Cannot be considered for providing services in the course of employment. Services by any court or tribunal established under any law for the time being enforced. Explanation, the term court includes district court, high court and supreme court, okay, point number three. Functions performed by the MPs, MLAs and member of panchays, member of municipalities and members of. Other local authorities, duties performed by any person who holds any post in pursuance of the provisions of the constitution in that capacity. Fifty seven, duties performed by the president of India, vice president of India, prime minister of India, governors, chief justice of India. Speaker of Lok Sabha, uh chief election commissioner, comptroller and auditor general of India, chairman of UPSC. Attorney general of India in that capacity. Duties performed by any person as a chart person or a member or a director in a body established by the central government. Or a state government or local authority who is not deemed as an employee before the commencement of this clause. Services of funeral, burial, crematorium or mortuary including transportation of the deceased. Sale of land and subject to paragraph five B of schedule two sale of building. That is in case where entire consideration for sale of building is received after issuance of completion certificate. Or after its first occupation, whichever is earlier, okay, next point number six. Actionable claims other than sub- uh actionable claims other than specified actionable claims. Actionable claims are specifically included in the definition of goods under section two clause fifty two. However, this para of schedule three specifically excludes actionable claims other than specified actionable claims. From the ambit of definition of supply, co-joint reading of the set provisions imply that. Implies that only specified actionable claims are treated as supply, all other actionable claims are outside the realm of. Definition of supply, now the question arises, what are the specified actionable claim? Actionable, they are, the actionable claims involved in or by way of betting casinos. Gambling, horse racing, lottery, online money gaming, okay, two clause hundred and two A. Online money gaming means online gaming in which players pay or deposit money or monies worth. Including virtual digital assets in the expectation of winning money or monies worth. Including virtual digital assets in any event including game, scheme, competition or any other activity or process. Whether or not its outcome or performance is based on skill, chance or both. And whether the same is permissible or otherwise under any other law for the time being enforced. Online gaming means offering of a game on the internet or an electronic network. And includes online money gaming two clause eighty A. Some of the other examples of actionable claims are. Right to recover insurance money, claim for arrears of rent, claim for future rents if these can be assigned. Unsecured loans, unsecured debentures, bills of exchange, promissory notes, bank guarantee, fixed deposit receipt. Right to receive the benefit of a contract, these are not considered as supply of goods or services, okay. Next segment, non-supplies notified wide notification. Okay, so the first thing is activity in relation to panchayat or municipality functions. Services by way of any activity in relation to a function interested to a panchayat under. Article two forty three G of the constitution to municipality under article two forty three W of the constitution are. Treated are treated neither as supply of goods nor as supply of service. Grant of alcoholic liquor license, services by way of grant of alcoholic liquor license by the state government are treated. As a supply of goods and not as supply of service. Such license is granted against consideration in the form of license fee or application fee for. Or by whatever name it is called, this special dispensation is applicable only to supply of service by way of. Grant of alcoholic liquor licenses by the state government or as an agreement between center and states. Hence, it is not applicable, okay, so we have completed. The second segment also which was supposed to be revised yesterday, now we have completed it, now let us go to today's quota. Sixty two to sixty five, so we will proceed on the same page itself. Hence, it is not applicable or has no precedence value in relation to. Grant of other licenses and privileges for a fee in other situations where GST is payable. It may be noted that services provided by the government to business entities. Including by way of grant of privileges, licenses, mining rights, natural resources such as spectrum etcetera. Against payment of consideration in the form of fee, loyalty etcetera or taxable under GST. Taxes required to be paid by the business entities on such services under diverse charge. Non-supplies clarified by way of circular. Interstate movement of various modes of conveyance. Interstate movement of various modes of conveyance between distinct persons including trains, buses, trucks, tankers. Trailers, vessels, containers, aircrafts, carrying goods or service, goods or passengers or both. Or for repairs and maintenance, except in cases where such movement is for further supply of the same conveyance. Shall be treated neither as a supply of goods or supply of service and therefore not leviable to IGST. However, applicable CGST, SGST or IGST as the case may be shall be leviable on repairs and maintenance. Done for such conveyance. Interstate movement of rigs, tools and spares and all goods on wheels like cranes. Above circular shall as it is applied to interstate movement of rigs, tools and spares and all goods on wheels. Except in cases where movement of such goods is for further supply of the same goods. Such interstate movement shall be treated neither as supply of goods or supply of service. And consequently, no IGST would be applicable on such movements. In this context, it is also reiterated that applicable CGST, SGST, IGST as the case may be is leviable on repairs. And maintenance done for such goods, circular twenty one bar twenty one bar two thousand seventeen GST dated twenty one eleven. Twenty seventeen, okay, which of the following activities are considered neither as supply of goods nor as supply of service. Interstate movement of trucks between distinct persons for repairs and maintenance, just now we saw. Repairson maintenance is not excluded, so this will be considered as supply. Grant of mining rights by the governments to businesses, yes, here they have specifically excluded. That mining rights will not be covered under exemption, so it will be considered as taxable supply. Services provided by an employer to the employee. Actually, it should be the other way, uh it should be employee to the employer, so this sounds more of a supply. I mean more of an exemption, more of a negative listing. And last one lottery, lottery is an actionable claim, specified actionable claim, therefore it is not exempt. It is still considered as supply only, so answer is C, but the thing has to be, it has to be changed by an employee to the employer. Okay, next. In the proceeding paras, we have, in the preceding paras, we have discussed. How to determine whether a given activity or transaction constitutes as supply. Once an activity or transaction qualifies as supply, one needs to determine whether the same is leviable to GST or not. Though the provisions relating to levy and collection of GST have been discussed at length in chapter three. In detail, okay, supply leviable to GST. For a supply to attract GST, primarily two additional conditions need to be satisfied, that is. Supply should be made by a taxable person and it must be a taxable supply, these two additional conditions have been discussed here under. A supply attracting GST can be made to a non-taxable person also. Okay, the restriction of being a taxable person is only on the supplier, whereas the recipient can be either taxable or non-taxable. A taxable person is a person who is registered or liable to be registered under to section twenty two or twenty four. Hence, a person who is liable to be registered but has not taken registration and remains an unregistered person. Shall be counted as a taxable person, similarly, a person liable to be registered but has got himself. A person not liable to be registered but has got himself registered by taking voluntary registration is also a taxable person. Okay, taxable supply. For a supply to attract GST, the supply must be taxable, taxable supply has been broadly defined and means. Any supply of goods or services or both which is leviable to tax under the GST law. On the other hand, exempt supply means supply of any goods or services or both which attract nil rate of tax. Which may be wholly exempt from tax under section eleven of the CGST act or under section six of IGST act. And includes a non-taxable supply. Let's go to next segment composite and mixer supplies, section eight. Two clauses are there, clause A, clause B, clause A talks about composite supply, clause B talks about mixer supply, okay, clause A. A composite supply comprising two or more supplies, supplies. One of which is a principal supply shall be treated as a supply of such principal supply. And then a mixer supply comprising of two or more supplies shall be treated as supply of that particular supply. That attracts highest rate of tax. Analysis, GST is payable on goods or services or both at the notified rates. Classification of any supply whether as goods or services, the category of goods or services is essential. To determine the applicable rate of GST on the particular supply. The application of rates poses no problem if the supply is of individual goods or individual services. Which is clearly identifiable and such goods or services are subject to a particular rate of tax. Okay, so from here, we will proceed tomorrow, so we have completed the second due also. Which is page number, this we have already completed, I am sorry, yeah, we completed this, page number two point six two to two point six five. Yes, this is done, now let us proceed to chapter three. Whatever we studied day before yesterday, we will read them now, page number one point two. I mean, page number three point one to three point seven, we will read that first and then we will do the today's quota. Next segment. Introduction, power to levy taxes drawn from the constitution of India to pay way for introduction of GST. Hundred and first constitutional amendment act two thousand sixteen was passed by virtue of this act, enabling provision was made. To levy GST on supply of goods or services or both in India, central excess duty state act and cert- vat and certain specific. State taxes and uh service tax were subsumed into a comprehensive GST. The very basis for the charge of tax in any taxing statute is the taxable event. That is the occurrence of the event which triggers levy of tax, as discussed earlier, the taxable event under GST is supply. CGST and SGST or UT GST are levied on all interstate supplies and goods or services. While IGST is levied on all interstate supplies of goods and or services. The provision relating to levy and the collection of CGST and IGST are contained in section nine of the CGST act two thousand seventeen. And section five of IGST act two thousand seventeen respectively. Let us now have a fundamental idea of interstate supply and interstate supply. As a general rule, where the location of the supplier and the place of supply of goods or services are in the same state or union territory. It is treated as interstate supply of goods or services respectively, similarly. Where the location of the supplier and the place of supply of goods or services are in two different states. Or union territories, understate and union territory, it is treated as interstate supply of goods or services respectively. The concept of place of supply and meaning of the location of supplier is discussed in place of supply chapter in detail. It is important to note that at inter level, provisions pertaining to import and export of goods and or services have not been covered. Such provisions have been discussed in detail in final, okay. Eleven definitions, central tax means the central goods and service tax levied under section nine of the CGST act. Integrated tax means the integrated goods and sa- service tax levied under I think the IGST act. State tax means the tax levied under any state goods and services tax act two clause one not four. Goods means every kind of mobile property other than money and securities but includes actionable claim, growing crops. Grass and things attached to or forming part of the land which are agreed to be severed before supply. Or under a contract of supply two clause fifty two. Electronic commerce means the supply of goods or services or both including digital products over digital or electronic networks two clause forty four. Electronic commerce operator means any person who owns, operates or manages a digital or electronic facility or platform for. E-commerce two clause forty five, exempt supply means supply of any goods or services or both which attracts nil rate of tax. Or which may be wholly exempt from tax under section eleven or under section six of IGST. Of I G S T act and includes non-taxable supply. Non-taxable supply means a supply of goods or services or both which is not leavable to tax under this act. Or under the I G S T act to clause seventy nine. Aggregate turnover means the aggregate value of all taxable supplies excluding the value of inward supplies on which. Taxes payable by a person on reverse charge basis. Exempt supplies, export of goods or services or both and interstate supplies of person having the same pan. Computer on all India basis but excludes central tax, state tax and the unit territory tax integrated. Taxant says to clause six. Prescribed means prescribed by rules made under this act on the recommendations of the council to clause eighty seven. Business includes any trade, commerce, manufacture, profession, vocation, adventure, wager. Or any other similar activity whether or not it is for a pecuniary benefit. Any activity or transaction in connection with or incidental or ancillary to A above. Any activity or transaction in the nature of A above whether or not. There is volume, frequency, continuity or regularity of such transaction. Supply or acquisition of goods including capital assets and services in connection with commencement or closure of business. Provision by a club, association, society or any such body for a subscription. Or any other consideration of the facilities or benefits to its members as the case may be. Admission for a consideration of persons. Admission for a consideration of persons to any premises. And services supplied by a person as the holder of an office. Which has been accepted by him in the course or furtherance of his trade, profession or vocation. Activities of a race club including by way of totalizer or a license to bookmaker. Or activities of a licensed bookmaker in such club. Any activity or transaction undertaken by the central government, state government or any local authority in which. They are engaged as public authorities, section two clause seventeen. Consideration, in relation to the supply of goods or services or both, it includes any payment made or to be made. Whether in money or otherwise in respect of, in response to or for the inducement of the supply of goods or services or both. Whether by the recipient or by any other person but shall not include any subsidy given by the central government or a state government. The monetary value of any act or forbearance in respect of, in response to or for the inducement of. The supply of goods or services or both, whether by the recipient or by any other person. But shall not include any subsidy given by the central government or a state government however. A deposit given in respect of the supply of goods or services or both. Shall not be considered as payment made for such supply unless the supplier accepts. Unless the supplier applies such deposit as consideration for the said supply to clause thirty one. Person includes an individual, a H U F, a company, a firm, an L L P. An association of persons or a body of individuals whether incorporated or not in India or outside India. Any corporation established by under any central state or provincial act. Or government company as defined in section two clause forty five of the Companies Act two thousand thirteen. Any body corporate incorporated by or under the laws of a country outside India. A cooperative society registered under any law relating to cooperative societies. A local authority, central government or state government, society as defined under the Societies Registration Act eighteen sixty. A trust, every artificial juridical person not falling above. Recipient, recipient of supply of goods and or services means. Where a consideration is payable for the supply of goods or services or both. The person who is liable to pay that consideration. Where no consideration is payable for the supply of goods, the person to whom the goods are delivered or made available. Or to whom the possession or use of the goods is given or made available and. Where no consideration is payable for the supply of a service, the person to whom the service is rendered. And any reference to a person to whom a supply is made shall be construed as a reference to the recipient of the supply. And shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of the recipient in relation to the goods or services or both supplied. To clause ninety three, registered person means a person who is registered under section twenty seven. But does not include a person having unique identity number. Reverse charge means the liability to pay tax by the recipient of supply of goods or services or both. Instead of the supplier of such goods or services or both under section nine subsection three. And nine subsection four or under section five subsection three five subsection four of the I G S T act. Section two clause ninety eight. Services means anything other than goods, money and securities. But includes activities relating to the use of money or its conversion by cash or by any other mode. Or from one form, currency or denomination to another form, currency or denomination for which a separate consideration is. Charged, section two clause hundred and two. Explanation for the removal of doubts, it is hereby clarified that the expression services includes. Facilitating or arranging transactions in securities. Supplier in relation to any goods or services or both shall mean the person supplying the said goods or services or both. And shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of such supplier in relation to the goods or services or both supplied. However, a person who organizes or arranges directly or indirectly. Supply of specified actionable claims including a person who owns, operates or manages. Digital or electronic platform for such supply shall be deemed to be a supplier of such actionable claims. Whether such actionable claims are supplied by him, through him and whether consideration in money or money is worth including digital. Virtual, including virtual digital assets for such, for supply of such actionable claims is paid or conveyed to him or through him. Or placed at his disposal in any manner and all the provisions of this act shall apply to such supplier of. Specified actionable claims as if he is the supplier liable to pay the tax in relation to the supply of such actionable claims. Section two clause hundred and five. Taxable supply means a supply of goods or services. Which is leavable to tax under C G S T act, taxable person means. A person who is registered or liable to be registered under section twenty two or section twenty four of the C G S T act. So here we see that it is also inclusive of a person. Who is supposed to be registered but is not registered, so he will still be considered as taxable person. And it is also inclusive of a person who has registered voluntarily irrespective of the fact whether. He is not required to be registered. If, if a person has voluntarily registered himself, even if he is supplying below exemption limit. He will still be considered as taxable person. Now. We had completed the backlog also, all backlogs clear. Now let us proceed to today's target which is maybe another five to six pages. Extent and commencement of G S T law, central goods and services tax act extends to the whole of India. Okay, India means territory of India as referred to in article one of the constitution, its territorial waters. Seabed and subsoil, underlying such waters, continental shelf, exclusive economic zone or any other maritime. Zone as referred to in the territorial waters, continental shelf, exclusive economic zones and other maritime zones act nineteen seventy six. The airspace above its territory and the territorial waters. So baseline, territorial waters, contiguous zone, exclusive economic zone and high sea, high sea is not in our control. So exclusive economic zone, this is continental shelf, so till here it is under. The definition of India, two hundred nautical miles from the coast. Okay, so and the thing is. Till here above the sky spaces also, airspace is also our territory only. And whatever is beneath the water level is also our space only. Right, state G S T law of the respective state or union territory with the legislature, Delhi, Puducherry and Kashmir. Extends to that of state or union territory, Maharashtra extends to the whole of the state of Maharashtra. State includes a unit territory with legislature. Okay, okay, so even if it is Puducherry or Jammu Kashmir Delhi, these three are. Called as unit territory but they have a separate legislature for them, so they have M L As. So in those unit territory for G S T purposes, they are considered as state only. Okay, so the only places where like Chandigarh and you have Daman and D U, Dadra, Nagarhaveli. Those unit territories, they don't have Andaman Nikobar Islands, Lakshadweep. They don't have separate legislature, so they will only be considered as a pure unit territory even for them, U T G S T will apply. Integrated goods and services tax act extends to the whole of India. Okay, union territory extends to, okay, they have given here. Extends to the unit territories of Andaman Nikobar Islands, Lakshadweep, Dadra Nagarhaveli, Daman D U, yeah, Ladakh is also there. And then uh Chandigarh and other territory. The unit territories without legislature, okay, union territory means the territory of, means the territory of. Andaman Nikobar Islands, okay, they have given here explanation for the purposes of this act. Each of the territories specified in subclasses A to F shall be considered as separate unit territory to. One fourteen of the C G S T act. Students may note that the erstwhile state of Jammu Kashmir has been reorganized into the unit territory of J N K with legislature. And union territory of Ladakh, why the J N K reorganization act twenty nineteen. Further, the erstwhile union territories of Dadra and Nagarhaveli. And Damanand you have been merged into a new unit territory called Dadra, Nagar, Haveli and Damanand you. Why the Dadra Nagar and Haveli and Damanand you merger of unit territories act twenty nineteen. Dadra Nagarhaveli and Damanand you, so many hands are here anyway. Sudhakar Enterprises has undertaken an interstate supply of taxable goods. C G S T and U G S, U T G S T will be payable on the set supply. Provided the supply is made in within Delhi, no S G S T will come. Puducherry, yes, G S T will come, Ladakh, U T G S T, Jammu Kashmir, S G S T. Okay, now. Levy and collection, section nine of C G S T act and the section five of I G S T act. Let's just, this look like proper core Barack things. Anyway, the analysis part they will have given in detail, but anyway let us not get overwhelmed or. Let us discount this as if it might not be important or something like that, whether we understand it or not. Let us just read them, respect these provisions and read them. I am very sure that the first two, three readings, we won't be able to understand much, but let's just stick to the process, let us keep at it. So, I am going to read. Till the end of page thirteen, so that will be uh end of today and from tomorrow we will proceed with the analysis part. Particular subsection one, subject to the provisions of subject to subsection two, there shall be levied a tax called central goods and service tax. On all interstate supplies of goods or services or both. Except on the supply of alcoholic liquor for human consumption on the value determined under section fifteen. And at such rates not exceeding twenty percent. Okay, as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. And collected in such a manner as may be prescribed and shall be paid by the taxable person, okay. Subsection two, the central tax on the supply of petroleum crude, high speed diesel, motor spirit commonly known as petrol. Natural gas and aviation turbine fuel shall be levied with effect from such date as may be notified by the government. On the recommendations of the council. Point number three, the government may on the recommendations of the council by notification. Specify categories of supply of goods or services or both, the tax on which shall be paid on reverse charge basis. By the recipient of such goods or services or both and all the provisions of this act shall apply to such recipient. As if the pro- as if the person liable or paying the tax in relation to the supply of such goods or services or both. Point number four, the government may on the recommendations of the council by notification specify a class of. Registered persons who shall in respect of supply of specified categories of goods or services or both. Received from an unregistered supply supplier, pay the tax on reverse charge basis. As the recipient of such supply of goods or services or both. And all the provisions of this act shall apply to such recipient as if he is the person liable for. Paying the tax in relation to such supply of goods or services or both, okay. The government may on the recommendations of the council by notification specify categories of services. The tax on interstate supplies of which shall be paid by the electronic commerce operator in such. If such services are supplied through it and all the provisions of this act shall apply to such e-commerce operator. As if he is the supplier liable for paying the tax in relation to the supply of such services. Provided that where an electronic operator, I am sorry. Provided that where an e-commerce operator does not have a physical presence in the taxable territory. Any person representing such e-commerce operator for any purpose in the taxable territory shall be liable to pay tax. Provided further that where an e-commerce operator does not have a physical presence in the taxable territory. And also he does not have a representative in the said territory. Such, such e-commerce operator shall appoint a person in the taxable territory for the purpose of paying tax. And such person shall be liable to pay tax. Okay, section five of I G S T act subsection one, subject to the provisions of subsection two. There shall be a live, there shall be levied a tax called the integrated goods and services tax on all interstate supplies. Of goods or services or both except on the supply of alcoholic liquor for human consumption. On the value determined under section fifteen of the C G S T act. And at such rates not exceeding forty percent as may be notified by the government. On the recommendations of the council and collected in such manner as may be prescribed and shall be paid by the taxable person. Now we can understand that. Whatever they have given in the C G S T, they have just, you know, changed it and repeated the same thing for I G S T. Okay, anyway, just let me quickly read this through and we can wrap it up. The integrated tax on supply of petroleum crude, high speed diesel, motor spread commonly known as petrol. Natural gas and aviation turbine fuel shall be levied with effect from such date. As may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. The government may on the recommendations of the council by notification specify categories of supply of goods or services or both. The tax on which shall be paid on reverse charge basis by the recipient of such goods or services or both. And all the provisions of this act shall apply to such recipient as if he is the person liable for paying the tax. In relation to the supply of such goods or services or both. Point number four, class number four, sorry, subsection number four. The government may on the recommendations of the council by notification specify a class of registered persons who shall. In respect of supply of specified categories of goods or services or both regis- received from an unregistered supplier. Pay the tax on reverse charge basis as the recipient of such supply of goods or services or both. And all the provisions of this act shall apply to such recipient as if he is the person liable for paying the tax. In relation to such supply of goods or services or both. Finally, the central government subsection five, the central government may on the recommendations of the council by notification specify categories of services. The tax on interstate supplies of which shall be paid by the e-commerce operator if such services are supplied through it. And all the provisions of this act shall apply to such e-commerce operator. As if he is the supplier for paying the tax in relation to the supply of such services. Provided that where an e- where an e-commerce operator does not have a physical presence in the taxable territory. Any person representing such electronic commerce operator for any purpose in the taxable territory shall be liable to pay tax. Provided further that where an e-commerce operator does not have a physical presence in the taxable territory and also does not have a representative in the. Set territory, such e-commerce operator. Set territory, such e-commerce operator shall appoint a person in the taxable territory for the purpose of paying tax and such person shall be liable to pay. Tax, okay. One more reason why I took the pain of reading the same definition again and again, same Barack things again and again is that. See, I just wanted to see if there is any one difference between particular difference between CGST and IGST provisions. So that's the only thing that we saw here is. Not exceeding forty percent because it is IGST and here they have given not exceeding twenty percentage. So in CGST alone they cannot keep. Uh rate of tax more than twenty percentage, so what we had with the maximum percentage we had. Twenty-eight percentage GST so far is sent it which was fourteen plus fourteen. So again, fourteen is less than twenty percentage, so there may not be a situation where we will see. A taxable rate of twenty-one percentage CGST, twenty-one percentage SGST, so totally forty-two percentage. So the CGST Act and IGST Act prohibits the same. So I just wanted to read uh so that. If there is any nuance, nuance difference between CGST provisions and IGST provision. So except that there is no such difference between these two, so in future rounds when whenever we come across this. I am just letting you know in advance, I will be reading only this CGST segment. And IGST segment, this portion I will be skipping because it is already there in the CGST segment. On that note, let us continue this from three point one four from tomorrow. We will wrap up today's session, so we start at with three point eight and we read till three point thirteen. Twenty-eighth October. Two thousand twenty-five. So you can update your sheets as well, so on that note, sorry, today is twenty-first. So on that note, let us wrap up today's session, I will see you tomorrow, thank you and bye-bye.